Been a busy week to have you both.
All right. Brian, you have. Called meeting no here. So the fact clients have opened records long.
We are complaining.
Roll call.
Council President Hooker.
Here.
Council member Hayden.
Here.
Council member Minky.
Here.
Council member Raisler.
Here.
Council member Weisabek.
Here.
Council member Weissapple is absent as his obviously may or may not. We have a court.
Let me introduce to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Somebody like to make motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Agenda's been adopted. Any public comment? I've seen them out there. Any public comments? They have no scheduled appearances. Consent agenda, the following matters may be activated by the city council utilizing a single vote. Individual items which any member wishes to address in greater detail or as a separate item on the regular agenda may be removed from consent agenda upon request of any council member. We have the minutes from the regular city council meeting on July 26, 2023, and barter relations for Ridley, Art Bauer at Selbach, and Amber L. Austin, Incas at Corral. Everything?
Everything is fine.
Move on to the business agenda.
Maybe we should adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
And the consent agenda has been adopted.
Roll call.
Well, yeah.
All the way to say aye.
Aye.
All right. On the business agenda. As you all know, the mayor is absent. The majority of you are aware of the tragic events last weekend. On behalf of the city, I would like to extend our sympathies and condolences to the Whitewatt family and relatives. That having been said, nothing came off the consent agenda. Administrator Rasmussen with the administrator here.
Just a couple of brief updates on items. And so I think as I said last time, in the course of this past week, I had meetings with both the of the school district met with library board to talk about contractual issues. I was part of that for a portion of that meeting and then I left to meet with Fun Fest folks. Council member Hayden can certainly chime in on the library board piece, but the 45 minutes I was there, things went very smoothly. Did an update from Mark afterwards as well.
We're going well on the way of resolving the situation.
That's clearly what it seems like and so that's a very positive thing. And again, you've heard me saying on behalf of superintendent Dover Spike as well that we thought there were things that would be able to be overcome and they seem to be working in a pretty good direction. Similarly with the Fun Fest folks at the last meeting or the previous meeting, there were some concerns obviously about our lots that were recently sold and what they might be able to do with Fun Fest, especially the carnival. We had a good discussion with five, six members of their organization. Clearly they have some concerns about this site and not even so much them as the carnival folks have. Because when we've talked internally, that's the potentiality of opening up various streets. We can certainly do that, but obviously depending on what the ride is, it can't be anywhere in the trees, can't be anywhere near power lines. So that is still one of their concerns is that they probably, they don't think they're going to have enough room for the carnival. There was even some discussions of potentially breaking up the carnival and some of the other pieces, but the carnival people were pretty clear that they make their money when it's all in one spot. So that's the way they were looking at it. So at this point, and I think some of you are aware that there is a survey, I believe now on Facebook for the Fun Fest group. I would encourage all of you folks and anyone at home to basically chime in here on that piece. But they are certainly looking at the possibility of ability of Tarrant Park. And so what I asked them to come up with is if you really think that that's a possibility or something you might be looking at, you know, put the layout of where you might want, you know, things to go and certainly we'd talk about that. You know, fair to say they had a number of concerns of, you know, where does the city council want us to be? I mean, I think speaking on behalf of the city is as long as you're within the city, city's happy. So, you know, Tarrant Park is what they decide on and we can make that work great. Obviously Memorial Park remains an option, but obviously with Madison Street construction next year, that's a concern as well. So maybe, you know, maybe if it's the case where they decide on Tarrant for a year as a test and, you know, kind of see how that goes, especially with the construction next year, maybe that's an option as well. But again, very clear to them, the city is supportive of wherever they want to be, especially when they're within the city.
Where is that survey? Is that on the date site?
You know, to be, I think, has anyone else seen it? I just heard it was on the.
I've seen it. It's, I think it's on the during approval group website.
Yeah, I think so.
Assuming you'll share that, Brian, if you see it.
Does the potential pool construction factor into what they?
It could, but as we talked, it basically, if it were just, you know, roped off or fenced off. I mean, even if they were doing construction at that time, it would be fenced off anyway. So they could make that work and they weren't really looking at that area or say it just, they didn't think it would hinder anything. So I think we work around that piece. But yeah, so they're considering all options. You know, clearly we also talked about the potentiality of, you know, if, okay, you know, maybe using the Morris's lot for some of those things and some of those things that they have on that lot, maybe we can push back behind this here. The, you know, some of the vendors, which I think, you know, some of the vendors have it on here, but the B made lost things and some of those stuff. So they, after the meeting, they did go back down there and they were looking around a little bit. So they're weighing all their options and again, just to know that the city's supportive of whatever they decide. So again, that was a good meeting as well. The only other thing I want to add, and we'll be talking about this obviously in the coming months, is budget process is coming upon us. So I would think at the next meeting, I was looking back at last year trying to get finance committee schedules and things on of that, probably next meeting will be a little bit more. But budget's at that time of the year again. So otherwise that's all I have, friends.
All right. Now discussion of possible action regarding resolution 2305, a resolution approving transfer of O.R. Hanson Park property by quitclaim deed.
So just a kind of update back to this. Obviously, we had some discussion about the potentiality of the dog park being at Hanson Park. We heard the concerns of the residents and obviously we decided against, council decided against pursuing that option. That precipitated some discussion of, well, what exactly would that property ever be of, you know, from a park standpoint, whether it's park or the people park, if you will. And I think even some of our internal discussions were along the lines of this city, frankly for its size, has some pretty nice parks already. And are we ever going to use that for, you know, potentially for any sort of other kind of a park? Or might it be better suited for potential residential development, which clearly we're in need of? And some of that discussion has been driven by the school side of things that, hey, if it were potentially to come back to us, that's what we would pursue. So again, we've got some internal discussion of that and this is, you know, a little bit of the culmination, so to speak, that the city's had that property for over 20 years at this point. We really haven't done anything with it. And so, you know, the school district wants it back for potential residential development. Obviously that's good for both the city and the school. And this resolution essentially would allow us to do that. Our attorney has looked at this. So in my discussions with superintendent Dover Spike, we were going to do the legal work on this side. He was going to do the legal work on the other piece, on the pieces. So that's kind of how we split that. So obviously the resolution you're looking at here is all pretty straightforward. You know, per the attached warranty deed, you know, in the middle, there were conveyances subject to the following. That, you know, said property shall be used as a park for the city of Duran, the name of which shall be O.R. Hanson Park. Number two, in the event the premises are no longer used by the city of Duran as a park, the property shall revert back to the school district, its successors and assigns, which essentially is what, you know, we would be approving here tonight if that's the route that the council wants to go. So yeah, I guess that's all I have to add unless there's some questions.
So that line has essentially been sitting there, but it hasn't been generating a taxable income or anything, right?
Correct. Yeah. And it wasn't generating any taxable income as a school property either. So tax exempt. But yeah, right. At this point, it's been 21 years of, I think as you've heard from, as we heard from some of the residents, you know, maybe a neighborhood, open area for residents to use and things of that. So it's not, it's not until the property has been just useless, some people have been using it. But yeah, I think, you know, I think we heard pretty loud and clear from the dog park that whether it's parking and the cost of development to get into that area, to even make it into a park is fairly cost prohibitive as well. And again, I mean this with all sincerity, we have, we have great parks. We have, you know, a lot of park area for a city our size and Matt and his crew do a good job of keeping that up. And maybe, maybe we really don't need another park. So probably certainly not as much as we can use residential development.
And we wouldn't have any say though, right? I mean, once.
We will. So per the, so I mean, one piece that I did have attorney, so basically the last therefore, and then again, I will get to a point where we specifically through this, but, you know, therefore be resolved, the county council accrue the conveyance of the property for future residential development. So that's our, again, if the city were, or the city, the school district were to get it back and, well, we decided we're not turning to a park. I think we got some issues with that legally.
Or what about sit on it for another?
Or sit on it. Yeah. Yeah.
If there's nothing that proves it's done through then?
I don't know that we, yeah. I mean, if that's something we want to put in, make it a timeframe issue. From what I'm hearing from superintendent Dover Spike is they want to move pretty quickly on this. I mean, and they've been, they've been asking for quite some time now, so.
Probably won't transparent in a year, but you know.
How many residences or how many lots could you put in up there?
That's a good question, Mark. At this point, it's, I, and I'll turn and look to Matt and I mean, that's, it's a tough one, but.
And is there good access?
It's, well, I mean, there's decent access off.
Yeah. So basically we have here, maybe a quick little synopsis right here. So this is Grant Street right here. There is, we do own a extension of Grant Street between these two houses. So we already have a road right away to get up. The park is actually up here off the map. So there is access up into that area. So you could basically put a road in here and then you'd have to sit down an engineer or some sort of a cul-de-sac to come back out and then you'd have lots around it. So, you know, but there's potentially, depending how big of the size of lots you want to put in there, you know, you could get three to five houses in there depending on.
It's five acres.
Yeah, it's five acres.
So South Street doesn't go up into there?
No. So our property basically, I'm sorry, the property that we own kind of comes straight up here, comes over here and then comes kind of back down here. This section over here is owned by a different property owner. So in reality, if you're going to put a subdivision in, you would, you would come in here, go over and come down just like what you have right here. But we, but we don't own.
They would have to work together.
So they would have to go to this property owner and see if they'd be willing to sell that chunk of land in order to do that. So if this property owner is willing to sell that chunk of land, you essentially come up, come straight over to come back down to South. If they're not willing to sell that, you're coming in here with the cul-de-sac and then putting as many homes as you can get in that five acres. If you did one acre lots, you get, I don't know if you get five homes in there because you obviously have to put the road in there. You know, the road's going to take up some acreage. So that's why I say three to five homes depending on the size of lots and the layout.
Acre lot though is pretty big.
Yeah, it is for, for, for a city to build. Just using rough, rough math.
Card from the horse, but what does that look like? Does the city have any, cost wise to get water sewer up in there?
Well, that would be, that would be the question of whoever decides to develop it. If they would come and look for some sort of developer agreement of, you know, guaranteeing this much a seskow or equalized valuation in return for some of that. Or again, the other side would be, that's just part of the cost of the construction or some sort of payback.
So there's chances that the city can work an agreement out with developer?
Yeah. Yeah. Again, we always have the option to say, sorry, we can't afford to do that or these are our terms.
And just to match point bringing up, we'll do the timeframe on it. I mean, that's kind of obviously dependent upon somebody buying it and being able to do all this too, you know, so.
I'm assuming there's water and sewer under the road up there already. So they would have to come in to tie into that or?
Yeah, there's water and sewer on Maryland Avenue. So they'd have to come, we'd have to basically start at the intersection of Maryland and Grant and go up through there. There's actually a big, there's a big drainage ditch that comes down through there. So there'd be a bunch of store, a bunch of stolen water work that would have to be done there. You know, some of those, maybe you can reshape the dirt and get that to go between houses and stuff. Yeah, there'd be a bunch of stolen water extension. We'd have to do water and sewer extension. The water and sewer extension basically depends on if they're just developing the five acres and putting cul-de-sac, everything's coming off of, off of the Maryland and Grant intersection up through there. If you got the other land, you can loop it around in different, different ways.
Well, the possibilities are if you develop that, the other land owner may develop, may decide to develop that too.
Being their best interest, I gotta imagine.
It's actually not, you know, there'd be a little bit more work to that one because that chunk of land is actually a township. So there'd be some annexation, things like that.
But that would be a bigger win-win for us then.
Right. Yeah. Nothing but more beneficial.
Clear any more discussion or somebody like to offer the resolution 2305?
I'll offer resolution 2305.
Second.
In motion.
Yeah.
Somebody's. That was, that was the only one we just, actually we didn't need the second on the offer.
Oh, sorry.
Somebody like to make a motion on resolution 23.
So I'll make the motion. We approve resolution or adopt resolution 2305?
Second.
And is there any more discussion? After your motion's been seconded. Resolution 2305, a resolution approving transfer of O.R. Hanson Park property by quitclaim deed. Whereas the city of Duran, the city owns the property described on the warranty deed attached heretofore as exhibit A and incorporated by reference to the property. Whereas the school district Durant conveyed the property to the city in 2001 for the purpose of building a city park. Whereas the city no longer desires to build a city park on the property and the warranty deed attached heretofore as exhibit A provides the premises shall revert back to the school district of Durant in the event the property is no longer used by the city as a park. Now therefore be resolved that the common council for the city of Duran hereby approves the conveyance of the property to the school district of Durant for future residential development by way of quitclaim deed. Now therefore be it further resolved that the common council hereby authorizes the mayor to execute said quitclaim deed this August 9th of 2023.
Differentiating resolutions, we do a roll call.
Roll call. Roll call.
Okay. Council member Raisler.
Yes.
Council member Minkes.
Yes.
Council member Hooker.
Yes.
Council member Weisabek.
Yes.
Council member Hayden.
Yes.
Five zero.
All right. Time to public safety, police department. Chief Frager.
So just an update on Blues. It was a great weekend, great crowd. We had one OWI, but it wasn't because of anything like that the Blues did or the borrowers. They worked hard to make sure we had silver cabs. They had two of them running. We had a reserved parking spot over here for them. So they really worked hard to try to make sure people got back to the campground safely, things like that. One person just made a bad choice that evening. But other than that, that wasn't really our only issue all weekend. We, we had a lot of people in town and a couple of minor issues, but overall it was a really good weekend. The open container stuff went well. Didn't have any issues with trash or anything at the end of the nights. They cleaned up really well afterwards. So overall Blues weekend was a really good success for our community. National night out, that was a great event. We, we served right around 430 or so plates of food. So we counted the plates afterwards, but we think a few of them got disposed of and things like that without using them. But right around like 4:30 is what we're figuring for food service that night. So it was a great night for the kids. We had a lot of great community support and we had a lot of support from our partners. The sheriff's department was there, Wisconsin DNR, Wisconsin State Patrol, Bridge to Hope, Hope for You, which is a suicide prevention, suicide services organization that comes to our event every year, health department, emergency management. So we had some great community partners there that night. Overall, it was just a great night. I did conduct an Alice training for NTEC about a week and a half ago. So it was nice to hear from them that they are being proactive with business, potential business incidents. So I went in, conducted Alice training for their employees. Alice is basically kind of more common knowledge is like run height fight, how to respond to active threat incidents. So I'm a certified Alice instructor. So I went into NTEC and worked with their employees on that. And again, I offer that to any other businesses that would like me to come in and do that service. It's, it's great for the businesses to have that training. So if something were to happen, at least they have that in the back of their mind and how they could respond to those situations. So other than that, that's all I have.
Any questions for the chief? Not, fire department report.
You know, with Chief King being gone and I would anticipate that he will not, well, he's not going to be back for the next meeting again. So I would anticipate we'll double up on the July report with the August report. First meeting is September.
To ambulance, Angie.
We had 33 total calls for the month of July. We made 28 of those. We had one missed 911 call and four missed transfers. Two of the transfers were requested out of state from Watershaw to La Crosse. We did obtain a new EMR, Anna Hen. She's from the Plum City area. She is already licensed and ready to go. She's just doing her training. And Sunday on the 20th, we set up a PHTLS training, which is pre-hospital trauma life support and it's through Sacred Heart. So they will be coming down to do EMT EMR training that day from 8 to 4 p.m.
Thank you. You know who the instructor is for me?
Through Sacred Heart?
Yeah.
It'd be.
It's not Robin, is it? Schultz?
No, Robin probably won't be down. It'd be Chris Wright and his crew.
Any other questions for the director?
He says, still planning the host. Is the number not good for sign up or?
Oh, yeah. Numbers aren't great, but we found that people are having trouble signing up for the EMR one class through CVTC. I have a lot of people reach out to me saying that on the CVTC side is requesting prerequisites that Shanty reached out to them. They found that it's their error. So they're not even sure. They're still trying to work out all the bugs. So as of right now, it's still showing zero, but we know people have been trying to sign up. So it's kind of a, when they get their end fixed, then we'll see how many come through. But the class is supposed to start on the 20th.
You're at least hearing from these people that, hey, I'm having trouble signing up. So at least you know about them and probably get that spread away to someone.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, I think your reports are getting better and better.
Thank you.
Anything else for the director? Move on to public works. Engineer's not here, Matt.
Yeah, just so you all know, our engineer probably won't be here for a little while. Russ had a medical condition a couple of weeks ago. He is recovering fine. Just has follow-up appointments and some things that he needs to take care of over the next couple of months. But we are being well taken care of through the company. Kevin Ankus is doing, doing most of our planning and we're still communicating with Russ via email and text messaging, something like that. So probably just won't see him at the meetings for a little while here. As far as my report goes, speaking of the Madison Street construction, I spent the day with Kevin walking the project, talking to some of the businesses. We hit four or five of them, talked about some key issues in some few places and trying to get their input on what they would like to see and how things are going out there and what we can and can't do. Some very positive feedback today. We are probably about 20% into the design. When we get around that 60, 50, 60, we will schedule a public hearing or a public meeting, not hearing, where we will invite all of the property owners on the project here. The city all have plans on the wall and we'll have a couple of different stations and people forum to talk to if they have any questions. You all will be invited to that if you want to attend. It won't actually be a physical meeting. We'll just, it's an informal kind of come as you go. We basically sit here for a couple, two, three hours and let people kind of come and go and ask questions. So we'll be doing that hopefully when we get to that 50, 60% mark sometime here in the next month, month and a half. So things are moving along. 12th Avenue East, we are pretty much ready for blacktop. It is on the county's schedule, should get here sometime in the next couple of weeks. I don't have an exact date. As well as blacktopping, receive pricing, doing some patching on 14th Avenue down by the softball field. It's pretty tore up down there. And doing a 300-foot chunk of Main Street out here that we got some pricing the other day. We do have the funding in our blacktop budget to do those areas. So we'll be probably moving forward with that around the same time we end up doing 12th Avenue. So there'll be some prep work that needs to be done for a day or two before they come peeling the old blacktop out here on the driveway in between second and third here before they come to blacktop. So we'll be working on that as well. The Dollar General sewer issue. The sewer lateral that they tied into is collapsed out in the street. So the only option they have currently, we've reviewed all their other options and the only option that they have is to dig up the highway, dig out to the main and replace sewer from the curb line out to the main. They are currently working with the state to get a permit to do that as well as a traffic control plan. We'll have to basically shut that whole section of road down because the sewer main is on the, across the center line on the other side. So there's really no way we could do a safe dig in a one lane traffic through there. So we'll be doing a traffic, they're doing a traffic control plan. We're trying to kind of get that all wrapped up here this week to try and get that done as soon as possible so they can get sewer access to the, to the building. Currently they've been given a certain window where they can use the, they have an outside trailer with bathrooms and running water. They've been given like an extension by the state to use that for a certain long time till we can get this fixed.
How old is that part of the sewer that collapsed?
It's old orange bird pipe. They used that, she's back in the, you know, 40s. So you know, give or take in that timeframe.
75, 80 years.
70, 80 years. Yep. That's how old a lot of that, a lot of the on Prospect Street from when in town is.
Sure.
And I'm sorry to interject, but you know, fair to say that when we saw that sewer issue at Corral, it's exactly what's in Main Street as well.
Exactly what's in Main Street as well. They had that down here, a couple of buildings down from us as well too. So a lot of it's still out there. That's how old our utilities are underground. So, you know, hard to, hard to portray that when we're just talking about it. But yeah, a lot of, that's why we talk about utilities and road construction is kind of our number one goal to try and update some of that stuff from happening. Speaking of construction, River Street down below, we have started, we put in, as you know, we put in the budget to replace a chunk of blacktop down there and some curb and gutter. We removed the catch basin. We're going to hopefully pour a curb here next week. We are not blacktopping that road back. We're actually pouring it back in concrete. It was actually cheaper to pour that in concrete than it was to blacktop it. Part of that reason as well is from curb face to curb face is anywhere from seven feet to about nine feet. And pavers are minimum of 10. So hard to get a paver down in there. And the only company that had one small enough to get in there was Mondrick and they're too busy to even call me back. So that's, I did get a quote from another smaller company and it was more expensive to put blacktop in there than it was to put concrete.
How far is that from being replaced?
What do we got? Like 120, 30 feet of blacktop out and probably about 100 feet of curb. The, the catch basin that was there was heaving and it was pushing the concrete up and the curb up and kind of buck on the road. So took that catch basin out, plugged that pipe. There's another one that's only about 20 feet down the road that will handle the extra water.
Was that replaced? Was that replaced when they did the?
That was put in when they did the river fill.
So was it bad design or what caused it to fail so quick?
You know, that's a good question. After, you know, the year after they put that in, the box heaved. You know, we assumed that maybe the water pressure heaved it up. So what we, what we did under warranty is we had them come back and put drain tile around that box to kind of alleviate the pressures and let the water go into the box. Uh, that didn't seem to help either because we repaired that up and then the next year she popped right back up again. So we tried a few other things, um, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly why that keeps heaving other than the groundwater changing so much there.
When the, yeah, when the frost is coming on the spring and then it floods and it's underwater, everything, if you look at the decks, even my deck, brand new. And that was state code, four feet down, cement four foot up, and now already rolls three inches of stairwell there. So every year that, the, the pressure of the water in the frozen ground, it, it adjusts the, every year.
So are we worried that we're going to be replacing this concrete in a couple of years?
I think the concrete will be.
I think concrete's going to hold a little bit better. Uh, we get rid of that box, that, that box is the only thing shifting. You know, the pipe's not moving, nothing else is shifting. The curb that we're, the reason we're replacing a hundred feet of curb is the curb was just deteriorated. Uh, so we just replaced all of that curb that was down there. The, the, the only thing that was really shifting was about two feet around that box. But you go up the road about fifty feet and the curb was kind of chipping and deteriorating, deteriorating. Uh, and the road is just, was just getting, uh, was kind of heaving around that box. And then we had some potholes, twenty feet up this way, another pothole, twenty feet up that way. So it, it ended up getting longer, not because of just the one, the one spot, but a lot of other different little minor issues that we figured we'd correct while we were down there as well. So, but yes, we do run the risk of potentially having to replace that quicker than what we would any other road.
But there's no, nothing to really that you know for sure that's cheap fix to solve that?
No, I mean, I walked it today. It's all pretty sturdy. You know, we're driving our loaders and our equipment down and it's not like it's spongy, you know, a lot of... Usually when you, when you have a sign like what's happening down there, there's a, a sub base problem. But I, I can't find a sub base problem when we're driving our loaders down there. I think it truly just is the water table coming up in, in the spring and, and just, you know, playing games with it. Uh, we, we don't have much problem with the sidewalk, so that's what kind of leads me to believe that we get rid of that box and, uh, we pour concrete down there, we'll be hopefully in a little better shape. A couple of other things, um, for those of you that maybe follow the, the news, the, the trend in water testing is PFOS. I'm going to butcher the acronym polyfluorescent acidic, something or other like that. This year we were required by the DNR, in years past it was voluntary testing. This year, uh, the DNR required testing. Uh, they wanted us to do testing quarterly, starting in April, um, for the rest of this year. Uh, we did our first round of testing in April. Uh, we got our test results back, uh, and it, it was no detect, zero, zero detect on, on PFOS. So the DNR has canceled the rest of our testing for the remainder of the year. So, uh, on the good news, in our water system, we have no detect of, of PFOS, which is kind of sweeping the state. It's like, uh, Teflon product, uh, three M made and a lot of firefighting foam that was used in and, and things like that. But we do not have any PFOS in our water system here in the city of Durant.
I have a question, if you, if you know off the top of your head. I know it was in the foam that the firefighters were using a lot, but what else, what else was it in that?
It's, it's pretty much in everything, like your, your, um, the non-stick coating that's on pans in homes. It's, it's a, it's a lot of it's in that. Yeah, a lot of it jackets, uh...
Water resistant.
Water resistant, water repellent type stuff. So it's, it's in a fair amount of products.
So as long as you don't eat your jacket, you're fine?
Pretty much.
Or your frying pan.
Yeah, frying pan. Uh, you know, and they're, they're finding a lot mostly in the firefighting foams because that was used and then seeps into the ground.
Right.
Otherwise it's, you, you, you see it a lot more in the leachate around dumps. And, uh, we had to test our dump a year or so ago over there and they're very minor, uh, detecs over there. There were detecs over there, but well below, uh, any of the, uh, levels that the DNR requires any further action on, so.
That's good.
And again, frankly, we didn't, we didn't think we were going to have any, we didn't know industries or anything that would. But it's, yeah, it's good news that, that's something we don't have to worry about, a lot of communities, a lot of communities.
What is the, what is the fix to that?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. It, it's too, that, so it's so early in the, in the finding of it that I'm not on, I don't fully understand the fix to it yet. Uh, they, they don't even really have a real good, uh, idea on the fix and/or even the testing parameters of it. It kind of, just kind of got pushed out there with, you know, we got to come up with something, you know, so I'm sure over the next couple of years it'll...
I think Wausau's dealing with a huge issue. And I think it's, it's putting like reverse osmosis systems.
La Crosse is dealing with it down, not La Crosse itself, but, uh, what's the?
La Crosse.
Whatever it is down in.
French Island.
Yeah, French Island's dealing with it pretty hard down there too, so.
Yeah, they can't even drink their water.
Yeah, they have. Um, while we're on the water system, we, uh, this year we also have to test, uh, for lead and copper. It's another program for the, through the DNR. Uh, we have, uh, thirteen lead and copper sampling sites. So what that is, is a, uh, uh, we have to do a study. First off, if there's any lead, we got to test those homes that potentially have a lead service. Uh, we got to do, uh, you got to get approved sites, you got to do, uh, uh, there's a bunch of criteria that you gotta, you gotta go through in order to, to get a site. But we've, we've went through that a couple of years ago, got our thirteen sites, uh, was able to make contact with ten of those because we need to have ten samples sent in, uh, for the size of our community. Uh, Monday afternoon, I delivered all the bottles to the ten sites and this morning, the bottles got, uh, delivered to Davi Laboratories. So I don't have the results back yet, um, but we did, we did do that. When I get the results back, I have to notify each homeowner what their specific results were, uh, and then we'll see where it comes in. We have, in all the years I've been doing lead and copper, I've only ever had one home that's ever even came close to the MCL, which is the maximum contamination level. So, uh, we've been pretty good in the lead and copper area as well throughout the city. So we just want to let you know that though, that testing, uh, just went out here Wednesday. Uh, as far as the pool, uh, we are closing eight o'clock Monday morning for the season. We were doing the open swim Friday from six to eight, uh, for the adult open swim. And then we'll be closed for the season after eight. Thursday, tomorrow will be the last, uh, open daytime swim from noon to six. So we will be, uh, essentially closing her down. It'll still have water in it, you'll probably still be seeing it circulate over the weekend. Um, we got to run some of our chemicals out and then we got to let that, uh, all the chemicals that are in it dissipate over a certain long time. So you'll still be seeing it circulate for, for a period of time before we actually pump it out. But then hopefully early next week, we can get it pumped out and, and start the winterization process. And that is all I have for the report unless anybody has any questions.
Anybody have any questions, Director?
I don't like to sound like a winterization.
Unravel it or not, it's tons of them.
All right, we've got the update on Tierney Park Swimming Pool Project. Uh, before this meeting at four-thirty, we did, uh, there's a couple of us met with the, uh, S, S, Sacred Swimming Pool Club. Matt, but, uh, Scott, do you want?
Yeah, I, I can start to, but obviously this is mostly a, a Matt issue and, uh, another person that we, we invited, and Mayor Gillian talked about this at length at the last meeting, that he wanted to get together and, and hopefully again, bring in Cole Hagnes, uh, from Duran Builders, who's been working with Matt extensively over the past several months. Um, just trying to come up with ways of potentially, how do we bid this project this upcoming time? Uh, and should you make it more, more attractive to, to, to more bidders, things of that nature? Anything we can do to, to potentially cut costs, um, and, and so then things like that. Um, we also had a recent meeting, as the mayor shared with Bob Comro, and he was also invited to the meeting, but, uh, he could not make tonight's meeting. But, uh, but, but really it was just kind of an open session to, to answer any questions that the SOS group might have had. We had heard that there, you know, there's, there's still always been some confusion out there of, uh, you know, where, where things didn't quite work out with the last bid process and, and so kind of walking through those again. Probably fair to say that the biggest, the biggest take and, uh, and Mr. Hagnes, you know, clearly, you know, confirmed this is the potential, the, the ability to have the longer timeframe to build, um, upcoming should, should aid us in, in getting good bids. Recall last time that we basically said essentially, you have to start at the end of August when we close the pool and you have to have it done by June of the following year. And we had some, obviously some, some large donors that were really looking to make sure that we didn't close the, close, lose the season, uh, for the pool. This time along, that, that just isn't possible. So clearly, you know, if everything goes according to Hoyle, we are going to lose next year's pool season and those contractors are going to have a full, basically essentially from, you know, potentially from October through the following June to get this done, May, I guess we'd say. But, um, so that should help. And again, Cole Hagnes was very clear that, that, that flexibility should really aid in the number of bids we get and hopefully with some sort of, some savings as well. Um, yeah, I think the, you know, another piece, so that we want to make very clear, whether it was talking to, you know, experts in the field like Cole and our continued discussions with US Aquatics and even other, other, um, other vendors that do pools, you know, a four-plus million dollar bid is, is probably going to be pretty close to what we get this time. Maybe we can knock a little bit off, um, but it's probably going to be in the neighborhood of four. So back to the SOS club of, hey, again, those come in at, at four million, we still have another million dollars to raise before the council would, you know, potentially need to act on the ninety days after those bids come in. Clarify again there a little bit, those bids are still, still on track for getting all of the, all the work done by, uh, the end of this month. Uh, well, well, sooner than that, middle of this month, probably next week. And then, uh, we should have those bids easily by the end of September, probably the twentieth somewhere in there.
Were we doing something with the liquidated damages of making that?
Well, that, I, 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 I still think, I still think we're going to have those, but it's less of a concern to the vendors because they have the, the, the flexibility there that frankly, they just didn't. We didn't give them much flexibility with the schedule of August to the following, you know, end of May.
Yeah, we can drop them too, I think.
But yeah, I'm sure they can.
We had them at like twenty-five hundred, for example, per day. We can drop it down to like, we still have to have something in there because we have to...
Oh, I agree, but it's not like a road project.
Yeah, we could drop it down to five hundred or drop it down to, you know, a thousand or something, uh, to ease a little bit of that burden as well.
That would just be my recommendation, that we keep it on the lower end of kind of what's the normal. Just, uh, again, get more, uh, buy-in from people trying to bid at it.
Clearly, we're not looking to discourage people, right? So I think you want to do it, like, make that a little bit.
Really, listen to that, almost a year and a half.
Right.
Well, yeah, but, yeah. Do we have a year and a half though? Because you're going to have so many days for that bid to be good and if you, they don't have the money...
Right.
You still have that, so.
You still have a time limit there on, not so much for the construction project, but for raising the money part of it.
So if we say, I mean, I, I guess, we tend to find internally, I think, okay, so we should know by roughly January first or end of December, something like that. With that piece with, uh, again, at the September deadline there. So then, yeah, so then basically it's, it's still almost a year and a half, a year and five months. Again, and that flexibility, even as...
Well, if we get the money, right?
Right, right, yeah, exactly. And talk about it if we don't. Uh, and clearly another thing that Cole mentioned is just not having to build in a winter season and all that extra cost of, you know, so obviously they'd be typically building during summer.
But with all, all, you know, we still want to make sure everybody understands that with not building through the winter, maybe saving a little bit there. We're, we're not talking about this, there's still going to be a four-plus million dollar project. Just the cost of material has not come down to the point where this is going to be less than four million dollars. We just want to make sure that nobody is out there thinking that this is magically going to come in at three or three and a half. It's still going to be a four to four and a half million dollar project a, after these bids come out. We still have, then that gives the, them as the swim club ninety days to find us a million, million and a half dollars.
Anyway, I agree, I, I, I hope they're not waiting until the bid guy, oh, they're, they're still pushing now and, uh, so.
Yeah, something like that.
So I, I thought it was a good meeting, it was a good discussion, I think. You know, we answered a lot of their questions that they were still had some concerns about or maybe had, you know, we haven't talked about this in several months and so, again, I thought it was pretty good. Again, you, great thanks to, to Cole Hagnes and Duran Builders and the work that they've done at the, even to this point and, and hopefully they'll be part of that bid process.
Is there an end date on it?
So it's thirty days, man?
Yeah, so when we get the, when we get the, all the documents are in line and everything's ready to go for bid, we'll advertise it in the paper and they'll have thirty days to get the numbers back to the city. And then from the time we open, we have ninety days to accept them.
And does the, the contractors, is there an end date for them to have to be done?
Yeah, so in the, in the, uh, in the contract documents that will be out for bid, they will essentially have to have this pool open by the fifteenth of, of, May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five. So they'll be able to, you know, we, we put in there, they'll be able to start as soon as they can in spring, roughly, because they ain't going to probably be breaking ground in January or December. So they can start as soon as they can in the spring and then they have until May fifteenth of twenty-twenty-five to have everything up and running so that we can essentially open the pool by June first of twenty-twenty-five.
Thirty day for bids, potentially it could be forty-five.
Yeah, we're going to, I got to talk, I got to check on a few things. It could, it could be a forty, forty-five day bidding window if that aids us in getting some better pricing. But through the pool... Through the pool contractors, I'll make some phone calls and if they think thirty's fine, great. And if they would like forty, we can, we can give a forty-day bid window before the bids are due back to the city. And then once the bids are due to the city, we still retain a ninety-day window to accept them.
So even with that timeline, we're still looking at end of September and then ultimately decision by January. You know, Matt said, you know, getting these bids in the newspaper. It's, it was a good question we had today, clearly it's the trade journal and the, uh, with the specific site.
Yeah, so our engineers put it out, there's a builder's exchanges, you know, there's a lot, we have La Crosse Exchange, you know, Claire Western Wisconsin Exchange, there'll be the US Aquatics will put it in the Minnesota Exchange. So then all these contractors, it's out in the exchange and then they see it and then they can decide whether they want to bid on it. And then they have to, to send in for, to pull plans. So we, we know when they pull plans, we get notified that contractor A has pulled plans, contractor B has pulled plans and C has pulled plans. So then we can look and say, well, geez, we got ten people that have pulled plans. Doesn't mean they're going to give us a number, but we just know that there's ten people that have pulled plans.
And we had that last time, we know that people pull plans, but then at the end of the day, I can't do this timeline, so I'm not even going to bid.
How much is it going to cost to get the other one out?
That's part of the demo and the bid, and the bid.
It is.
It's all in the package.
The first bid was, was about half a million.
Yeah, the first, the first bid for demoing the old pool, there was also a bunch of underground utility work that was in that bid, but it was rolling. The demoing of the old pool and all the underground site work that we needed was almost four hundred thousand dollars, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That was the bath house too?
That's demoing the bath house, the pool and redo, putting a new water line in, uh, putting a new storm sewer line around the pool because the current one goes under the pool, uh, and then, uh, putting another storm, another drainage pipe in for winterizing the pool. So there, there's a lot more than just demo, but they're, they include demo in that, in that site work, which was a three fifty to four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's a big chunk of money.
The pool itself, uh, just for the pool and all the pool amenities and the pool equipment was about two and a half million dollars. So the, and then the building came in when we went out to bid last time at like one point three million dollars. So it was still...
Building and equipment though, right?
Build, yeah, building, pots and the whole thing, everything besides building, yeah.
All the plumbing and everything.
Well, nothing else, any more questions or discussion? Any bills? Ready to go?
See what's happening up in Miami, up there in twenty-eight. No one doing that, like, it's either they all, or get the first layer down.
Next motion, we approve vouchers.
Second.
No call. Remember Weisenbeck?
Yes.
Remember Raisler?
Yes.
Remember Hooker?
Yes.
Remember Hayden?
Yes.
Remember Menkes?
Yes.
Bible. All right, vouchers have been approved, any future agenda items?
I mentioned the budget stuff, um, so again, we'll talk about that next time and talk to Department Head Sider, or if there's any future, um, committee meetings, but clearly we will be having committee meetings as part of the budget process. So again, we'll probably double up on some of those things if, if the topic comes up.
All right, other than that, the next, uh, regular city council meetings, Wednesday, August twenty-third, twenty-three at six thirty PM. I entertain the motion to adjourn.